Welcome to our work session. Questions on the agenda? Okay, consent agenda. Mr. Gill, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, we actually have a couple of guests here that are, you may want to, I hope the board will let us hear from them. Ms. Barnes, if you'll do the introduction and talk about what it is.
Yes, sir, I'd like to introduce tonight, Tim Glover. He's the Vice President for Mission Integration at Middle Tennessee Medical Center. And Kathy Farrell, she's the Health Outreach Coordinator. And they are here tonight with regard to the contract with the Primary Hope Clinic and Behavioral Healthcare System, which is facilitated by Murfreesboro Middle Tennessee Medical Center. And its services provided to our underinsured and uninsured students. So it's a mobile health unit. And you've got to come up and say this much better than I can. It's a mobile health unit that will make its way around Rutherford County schools to provide services for our students. So, Tim, if you'd like to add a little bit to that.
Thank you so much, and thank you for letting us be here this evening. Our mobile health unit is designed to try to overcome barriers to access to primary medical care and to behavioral or mental health care. We've been able to find this collaboration and this model to be extremely effective of helping folks who do not have insurance or do not have adequate insurance to be able to establish a medical home with a provider or with a mental health provider in order to improve their health, not only for children, but really for that whole child's family system, which then enables them to flourish as a citizen, as a student, and as a family system. Any other maybe questions that you have or anything, be glad to respond to that.
Any questions? Wayne?
Who finds, who pays for this?
We do. It's a collaboration with Middle Tennessee Medical Center. We provide the medical mobile unit as well as underwrite charity care cost that is there, as well as underwrite many of the, some of the salaries with that. The Primary Care and Hope Clinic provides the licensed nurse practitioners who provide the care themselves and the medical supplies. Then the Guidance Center provides their behavioral health specialists to provide those services and any costs related to it. So, we provide those services. If persons have insurance, they can utilize their insurance. There's a few, sometimes with TINcare that helps, and sometimes we're able to help people get on coverage that they didn't know where they qualified for. But those who can't afford or don't have insurance, then we cover that free of charge for them.
So your units come to the schools? Is that, and is it during the school day or after hours?
During the school day, we kind of use the school, the schools we have always found to be kind of the hub of communities and neighborhoods. They're a trusted place where you have access to intergenerations of persons. And so, we found that the school and targeting schools and communities of needs or schools of needs, so that we also try to not only meet the community needs, but also certain objectives that the school system may have related to health of their student body or health-related targets that they want support and achieve. So, we try to make it a win-win, so everybody is achieving shared objectives and goals.
Other questions or comments?
May I add one thing?
Please.
The role of the schools will be to help communicate the information out to the parents that the mobile health unit will be at the schools on a certain day. But parents do communicate through their system to make appointments. Parents must come with the children unless they're over 18, correct? So, it's strictly a parent-child communication with the mobile health unit. But we'll make sure we can send out school messengers or notifications in paper to say the unit's going to be at the school on this date. So, you know, take advantage of it.
And we've not done this before, have we?
We have. We did have a very successful event at the Eagleville School. On Saturday before Easter, we did a medical mission event out there and just a wonderful day. And so grateful to the school there for their hospitality to let us set up a kind of overall dental vision and medical and behavioral health clinic for the uninsured there, and we're able to care for 125 individuals, seven of which who needed follow-up surgery and procedures and probably saved their lives. So, we found, again, this model to be extremely successful. So, great, grateful to the hospitality of Rutherford County Schools and Eagleville School for that. We feel like this can be an effective model.
Well, we appreciate you bringing this program forward. It sounds like an excellent thing for us.
I just want to say, it sounds, it sounds to me like we've got the easy job here and you guys are doing the heavy lifting. It's a tremendous sounding program.
We look forward to it. We think it's going to be exciting to benefit the schools and the whole communities that the schools seek to serve.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you so much for having us.
Donald, did you have a question, sorry?
Guidance Center, you have a connection with the Guidance Center?
Yes, sir, we do. They provide behavioral health services, so they use a licensed psychiatric nurse practitioner or a case manager, and also even have the capacity with new technology for tele-psychiatric medicine with a psychiatrist, where the student or adult or family can actually sit before a psychiatrist through that technology and be assessed and things of that nature. Yes, sir.
And they are referred to the Guidance Center through you?
We often work through a coordinator for school, coordinator for health outreach such as Ms. Farrell. They can be referred by a local, their physician or clergy or guidance counselor within the school system or teacher that's concerned that gets them. So, they really come to that unit through multiple referrals. But I would say the vast majority, and I'll let Ms. Farrell speak to that, probably come through the guidance counselors and educators and principals of the local school.
We have this model right now in Murfreesboro City Schools and found that we're serving multiple, because a family system's not just in one school system. Their children, you know, are in both systems. And we have been treating a lot of children who have a younger sibling, maybe in Murfreesboro City Schools, or they just become aware of our services through word of mouth. Primarily, my referrals for the Guidance Center come through a teacher, come through a behavior intervention specialist, or come through a guidance counselor. But a lot of times, it's that relationship with the guidance counselor and the student and that conversation. Listen, I've had a lot of assistant principals and principals refer people in particularly for that service because there is maybe some sort of a behavioral issue or a significant life change in that family system. And they realize that that family could benefit from something beyond what they're able to offer in that building. So, does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having us.
Any questions on the other items on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Six, seven, and eight will be Thursday night. Nine, anything more to say about that, Mr. Gill?
Well, only that we did some legwork today with respect to ROTC, Compliance Liaison. I think there was another question. The ROTC was, in fact, a minimum salary that's required by the armed services. And we obviously are required pursuant to the contract or the agreement with them to provide X number of dollars per ROTC instructor based on his experience and also rank. Now, they do, they do work 11 months versus 10 months at the regular, that the regular teacher does. So, justifies somewhat of a salary increase. Also, this really doesn't relate to the salary increase, however, the government does supply us with about $70,000 per ROTC program, ROTC NOW, substitutes for fiscal education, and there's another requirement, personal finance for credit.
Personal, is it still part of the government requirement too, Don? Didn't ROTC at some point in time get the, a credit, two credits in ROTC or four, worked toward a government credit as well?
Where you can get the personal finance, you can get the government, and also you can get some for P D.
I didn't realize you got government, to be honest with you. Okay.
You see in the L U, I mean, they don't get, you don't get two credits for the one hour ROTC, but you get action L U or twice.
Right.
Have to take a separate section.
Okay. But a lot of good obviously comes out of ROTC. And those guys in the summertime, as part of their 11-month responsibilities, do camps. And I can attest that they're there early and stay late. But at any rate, at the end of the day, we're required to compensate them at the rate dictated by the government. Also, there was some work done on the Compliance Liaison. I don't, I'll be honest with you, I didn't look at that. I'll look that over for Thursday night. I'll give you a report on that. Okay? Yes?
On the portables, is this just?
We just did routine bids. We're not intending to buy any portables. But in case something happened, we had 400 kids show up over what we anticipated. We had to have some portables. We got it on bid and we were ready to purchase.
And we have some that get, getting some age on them too.
Oh, absolutely. Well, Mr. Clardy talked about the wear and tear when we transport those things. And a lot of the ones, you might imagine, for example, if school A has to give up two portables to school B, they'd prefer you take the older portable and keep the newer ones, and rightfully so. So, what we transport won't be in the best condition, but we'll do our best to get them working right. Mr. Clardy?
Do we anticipate moving several or we?
Oh, yeah. We're moving quite a few. Don, you got the number. Do you remember? You and I worked on that. How many portable will we move? Gary?
Eleven this year. That's what we was planning.
Yeah. How much, what's it cost? Was $8,000 to move and set them up? Yeah.
Depending on the length of the, how far it is to get the length of the.
So, 80 and $90,000 could be used for better, better expenditures.
These going to high schools or just a different?
We can get you a list of them. We'll give you a list on Thursday. Probably pretty interesting. See who's getting them. And, you know, we worked real hard with principals to, you know, find ways not to buy and not to move. And most of them, you know, it resulted in the fact that one or two more teachers maybe had to roam or they had to find a place to put people that they ordinarily wouldn't. But we kind of sold the commission on that new high school on hey, we're going to hold off on buying portables as long as possible. I don't want next year bringing up.
I don't know. There's so many campuses that I don't know where you're going to put them.
It's an issue too.
We're, we're in the process of working through that right now and getting locations through to the principals. Our high schools, we're in, we're going to discuss if we're going in to just, to get the high school recruitment. We're going to have six portable, more portables in the parking lot up there. So, it's, you know, it's a struggle in some schools to figure out locations to put them.
Okay, other questions?
No, but if I might, Doc, if there are no other questions. Also, I guess this is old business. We talked about it last night, but supplements. We talked about soccer last night. And Ms. Barnes and Ms. Samick and I met earlier today. As I said last night, there's like three or four supplements at the high school level that are, that are based on 8% compensation to the coach. Girls, boys, soccer, I want to say track, I want to say volleyball, and wrestling. And then the next level is 6% to some other minor sport. And we were trying to ascertain who, you know, does a soccer coach need the extra 2%? Is he working hard? Is he spending more time? Does he have more kids? So, what we've done, I told Ms. Barnes to send the high school principals an email saying, hey, here's the deal. The board is considering, you know, maybe soccer needs more money. Are they, in fact, spending more time? Do they have more kids? Is there more supervision? Does it warrant giving them two more percent and leaving these rest, these guys behind at 8%? So, I think they would know better than anyone else objectively who, how that ought to play out. So, we'll have a report by Thursday night, I hope.
Sounds good. Okay, that takes us to tenure, yeah.
Approval of a special course at Laverne High School. Within the first three years of special course, the state must reapprove the course if the teacher listed an initial special course request changes. Laverne High School is requesting approval, special course, Honors Mythology to be taught by Abraham Morang. So, we'll recommend that.
Wayne?
How many students have to sign up for a course like this for it to stay, stay on the books?
Well, ideally, there'd be 15, minimum. We try to hold to that, but it's sometimes really, really, really difficult.
That's just elective, I take it, or? Trying to think what you would do with that course.
Well, I mean, that wouldn't be an area that I would be interested in, so, I mean, I can't speak to it.
Maybe your horizons need to be broadened.
Maybe so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could we get a little information on this? Might be something that interests him a little bit. What all is this involved? Is anybody?
The coursework.
The coursework?
I couldn't tell you.
Anybody?
Reeking rhinoceroses, isn't it?
The two together, I couldn't figure it out from the.
Zeus and Thor and all those guys. They're the movie out right now, so.
Yeah, well, okay.
Are we in first year or second?
Oh, they've actually done it, I think.
Okay, number 11.
Facilities. Water line at David Urie School. Rutherford County Schools Engineering and Construction Department is currently having a problem with water pressure at David Urie Elementary School. Apparently, this has been an ongoing problem for many years. Water pressure's been low for years, and a booster pump was added in the mid-1990s to help with the problem. Maintenance repair cost, the capacity of a pump has become a significant issue. The only real solution is to extend an eight-foot water line, or eight-inch water line, up to Tucker Drive to the school, increasing the pressure. The line will be installed at Towne Smyrna. It costs $23,200 plus a $5,000 contingency, totaling $28,200. Funds will come from the maintenance budget, and we request that you do that.
Okay, discussion? All right, number 12.
Most of you got a correspondence, probably from Mr. Jeff Reed last week, and also you got something from the state on change in the tenure law. And Ms. Barnes will kind of give you the highlights tomorrow night of those changes.
I think we also have, I believe Jeff might have emailed us this, but he's frequently asked questions that are sort of interesting. So, I'll take a look at that if you haven't already.
The, I think I read in the paper this morning that the Senate had passed a statute, well, the law is going to contain a policy manual referring to all those things like.
Collective bargaining?
Well, benefits and, so, that will take, that'll take collective bargaining out of it, I suppose.
Well, but the, yeah, the Senate has passed a collective bargaining. Now, it's waiting for the House, which I think is scheduled in the next week or two, maybe. So. Questions about tenure? So, this, I think we all are aware, but it only applies to teachers hired, what, after?
Effective this, next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, 13.
Tenure for certified teachers. Tenure with Rutherford County School System is awarded certified teachers who admit the following criteria. Have a degree from an approved four-year college or to any vocational teacher who has the equivalent amount of training established licensed by the State Board of Education. Holds a valid professional license based on training covering the subjects or grade taught. Has completed a probationary period of three school years or not less than 27 months within the last five-year period. Last to be employed as a regular teacher. And is re-employed by the Board of Education for service having the probationary period. And we'll recommend that the list of teachers is presented for tenure.
Discussion.
Mr. Gill?
Sir?
With the new tenure law, you know, say a teacher is not tenured under this present law, it, what does that mean with the new one?
Like a new teacher's hired next year?
Well, say, yes, say they were hired back by, say, by another school. So, they basically would go through a possible, they'd go through their five-year plan. Is that?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand your question. I think, Paul, if you're employed by our system this year, maybe in their first or second year of ten, of employment, after July this year, they'll have to meet that five-year criteria.
Okay.
So, five years within a seven-year period. So, those teachers that are first and second year now and ROTC tenured this year will have to move into the new process.
Okay, okay.
I don't imagine they're too happy about that. That's sort of changing the rules in the middle of the game, isn't it?
No, no, yep.
Nobody asked my opinion.
You're going for the legislature.
That's right. If I want an opinion, I'd. 14.
Approval of non-renewal for non-tenure teachers. The board must authorize director schools recommendation for non-renewal of non-tenure teachers. And we're going to recommend that you authorize a director schools recommendation for non-renewal of non-tenure teachers at the conclusion of 2010, 2011.
Discussion.
This is another change with the new tenure law that whereas, as it currently stands, these people have to be separated from the school system if they're not renewed. But in the new law, they could be retained. Am I correct? With that going in place in July, is there any possibility that that's going to affect any rehires coming in the fall?
Yeah, sure.
I actually have to refer to my notes like you do on this question and answer to get all this absorbed in my head. But if, if a teacher is not eligible for tenure when the new law goes into effect, they have, they have two criteria. They have to meet the five years, and their performance evaluations have to be in these above expectations or significantly above expectations. If both of those criteria are not met, the new law says that that teacher can be continued in employment on a year-to-year contract until such time they meet both criteria. They would have met one, but not the second one. So, if they get their performance evaluations up to where they are expected to be, then they would either have to be recommended or non-renewed. So, it does give school systems some leeway in retaining those teachers on a year-to-year contract. I believe that's your question?
Would that process start anew or would that, I mean, how, how would, how would Rutherford County recognize that if, if a teacher has completed three years, does not make tenure, and yet some school here chooses to bring them back this coming fall?
Okay, you're talking about this year.
I am.
If, if we have a third-year teacher who's not recommended for tenure, we always make sure our school administrators understand that if you have a person who has been teaching for three years and has not been recommended, they, that they have that information because in the past, had they hired them, they would automatically be given tenure. Now, we'll, we'll make sure that they understand that after July 1st and this law goes into effect, that same teacher will have two more years on a path towards tenure. And had, they'll have that opportunity to watch their performance in their schools.
Really is a second chance.
It really, it is.
You know?
It is. And, you know, people would be reluctant to take somebody that would be instantly tenured at their school without knowing very, with knowing very little. So, it does give them a second chance.
What's the status of the evaluation instrument? Is the state still working on that? Because don't you foresee a lot of people being above expectations when these evaluations take place?
Actually, what we have been told, and I haven't seen the rubric yet, but Tim Gaddis from the state has explained to us that in this new process, in the pilots that they've done across the state, that the level three, the average, is what they're seeing as, as the component that, that most teachers are achieving. So, he said, and if you have a school full of, of level-three teachers, then you're going to have a very strong teaching population in your schools.
But don't they count that with, you have to have a four or five?
In order to be recommended for tenure. So, we're a little bit concerned about that process.
They're going to lead to great inflation. I mean.
Correct.
That would be the concern.
But we do have all of our administrators and central office signed up for the three cohorts here in June. And then we have about 125 people signed up for the training. It's a four-day training. So, we'll hopefully learn more about it at that time.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. Other questions or comments on this? It's a major change, obviously. Okay, 15.
Student Discipline Appeal. Board has been requested to review the April 21, 2011 decision of the Disciplinary Hearing Authority to oppose the remandment of a student from Riverdale High School to Daniel McKee Alternative School. This review is pursuant to the provisions of Policy 6.318. Policy states that the board shall review the record and shall affirm the decision of the DHA, modify the decision to a lesser penalty, grant a second hearing, which will be before the board or fore-denial a request of board meeting, for board hearing, pardon me.
You all have this information in an envelope at your place, so please look at that before we come back on Thursday. 16.
Rutherford County Teacher Recruitment Fair. Ms. Barnes, I'll talk a little Thursday night about the recruitment fair. Truly been a shining star for us. You guys did a really good job organizing, which I personally appreciate. You get a lot of folks out that are interested in teaching. And we actually hired some folks that day and certainly collect a lot of resumes, which give us an early jump on good teachers, which is what makes us a good system.
I think several of us have brought by those, and it's tended to be a big crowd and a lot of activity, so that's a good event. General discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I hope this is the appropriate time. When we were talking about the budget last night, I guess, well, I can do that now.
Sure.
We were talking about the 1.6 from the state. You know, I read for weeks or if not months that the governor wanted to, of 1.6.
Right.
So, are we saying that 0.8% is coming from the state? And then 0.8% is coming from local money, and then we're doing the bonus? Is, am I misunderstanding that?
Probably higher proportion of that's coming from the state, hopefully.
Somewhat higher.
Yes.
I, I can try to calculate that. It will be a loose estimate.
Okay. So, it's, but as far as the state, they're, they're not, of that 1.6%, are they paying the bulk of that?
Over 50%?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, okay.
I, I, I will try to come up with something that looks at classified and certified.
Okay. Yeah, and the only reason I'm bringing it up is, you know, the governor for so, for so long has been talking about this raise. And, and my perception was it was going to be 1.6, and then the state would pay, and then we would kick in, you know, so much. And then, then we'd have this bonus on top of it. So, I, I guess I totally misunderstood the way the process was working. So, it is 1.6 for state and local, and then the other will be the bonus. Is that correct?
1.4 will be from that federal Education Improvement Act, yeah, Jobs Act. But the 1.6, there's a funding mechanism in place which allows wealthier counties to contribute more towards the salary increase than it, than somebody that's less wealthy.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
That can't really generate the funds Rutherford County can. So, we probably have, have to ante up a little more than, say, a, a high poverty district.
And it also varies by the type of position, how much the state funds. So, this will be a blend.
Is there a clear distinction between classified and certified?
Yes.
What is that distinction?
Well, classified staff do not have, are in positions where they don't have to have, be licensed teachers.
I understand that distinction. Is there a clear distinction as to what the state is funding?
I don't think they're funding much of it, if any.
They're, they're, they're funding less on the classified, I would say.
But funding some?
Some.
With that estimate of more than 50% in certified, not sure, okay.
But Jeff, how, like, for example, are they specifically earmarking money for classified raises?
They're, in the components that they have, there were. There, in the components that they have, there were some small position raises. Not one point six percent, it was, they do some studies, I think, to come up with an average.
Okay.
So, I, I can isolate what those changes were and put a percentage to that.
I guess we can assume the formula for doing that is just as complicated as the BEP formula that we've tried to figure out over the years, okay?
I think you can.
That's problematic right there, because we've tried to understand that for years and with great difficulty.
Other discussion.
Some months ago, we looked at a small triangle of property in Smyrna, and the board discussed the possibility of gifting that piece of property to the town of Smyrna, and there was a building that was going to get relocated and all of that kind of stuff. All of that has passed, and nothing has ever come of that. However, I did have a conversation along the way where Smyrna feels like that the, the separation in that deed has always been kind of an error, and that that piece of property somewhat useless to the school system should be put in the care and possession of the town of Smyrna as they are maintaining it and have that fire station right next to it. So, after some time had passed, Tony Dover asked me, said, you know, can you bring that back up? And we go ahead and get that in Smyrna's hands, it's not of any use to the Board of Education. Is that something that we could look at?
This is the one that had the.
We tried, we tried to give it to them back then.
Wouldn't take it.
If they relocate that school, and they didn't want the liability, I believe, associated with the school.
The liability on the movement of the school, right.
Or didn't want them, the security risk involved. I mean, we don't typically give land away. I don't, I mean, we gave some land during eight years I've been here. Only thing I remember giving away was to the boys' club, we gave them a tract of land. With all respect to Don Tony, land can, dirt's pretty expensive.
Is, is that something that, is that property, has it been appraised? Would it have value since it really is not big enough to do anything but maybe put a lemonade stand on? I mean, if it actually had.
There's some setbacks, I believe, we discussed before, that would take, take you, prevent you from putting anything else out.
Exactly, right now, you know, the fire department, the fire department has a driveway and a right-of-way across it, you know, and, and the town of Smyrna maintains it as far as cutting it and, and all of that.
I would just recommend holding on to it until we get the high school started.
Okay.
Understood.
Point well taken.
There you go. Well, you're going to build an annex to the high school over there.
You never know.
A lemonade stand can supplement, you know, whatever.
Are you saying a small project, but a big headache?
Other discussion.
Almost.
Obviously, in light of what took place last Wednesday, there are folks interested in reviewing procedural policy, whatever we do for weather. And so, I mean, I, I think that's the question I would have, is how's that decision made? When is it made? Because I, I think that the question that was asked to me more than anything else is, when does that decision have to be made, and why does it have to be made at a certain time, so forth? So, if we can get a clarification on that and some discussion and recognizing how difficult the decision is, I'm not, I'm not trying, want to be critical, but we obviously had folks asking that question.
When's the decision have to be made by?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, obviously. Kind of addressed in the paper, but obviously, you know, we got buses hit the pavement probably about five fifteen across the county. We have storms rolling, you know, I don't, it's hard to reverse the engine once you're going.
Sure.
You know, once those buses are rolling and once they're started, and you realize an hour in or forty-five minutes in that, hey, this storm's worse than we thought it would be, it's hard to just stop everything in place, which is what happened to us last week. By six-ten or six-oh-five or something, I was obviously getting pretty doggone nervous. Particularly somewhere around five-thirty, five-thirty-five, we see there's a warning at Edigaville that's supposed to blow on through. You know, I, I don't want to say that there's always going to be a judgment that somebody's got to make there. I'd like to say, over the last eight years, I think I've hit them almost right almost every time. If I had to do over again, or if I had an opportunity to, you know, if I knew what was going to happen thirty minutes out, I obviously would have done something early on, but didn't. And, you know, I'd try to apologize to parents for the snaf, what, what, I think that somebody used the word snafu for the whole issue, and I think there'll be another day that a superintendent will make a decision that people won't like. I don't think there'll be more storms, there'll be more snow, there'll be more hail, there'll be more all kinds of things. It was just a tough call, I thought we could get them through there, I thought the storm would be out at six-ten. I still remember my wife saying, I hate to throw her on the bus. But what she said, surely you're not going to consider calling school because of the storm? And had the same conversation on the phone with a couple of people. Then Gilbert called me and asked me what I, what my things were, what do you think we ought to do? What do you think, you know, I mean, she was pretty, she too was pretty antsy at that time, so. And their situation was uniquely different than ours in that they, they have, what, eight or nine, ten schools, and they start at seven-thirty, and they're all in close proximity, it's a lot easier to, to stop the machine then. But, anyway, didn't foresee what it was going to happen, didn't foresee the trees being blown down. Clearly, I, I mean, I'd say I probably missed it.
Well, you know, from, from my perspective, I mean, I, I've commented to other folks, I, I don't recall a time ever in the history of our school system that schools have been called off based upon those kind of warnings. And we could be years and years and years and years and years, I guess, before that timing comes up at that time. Typically, those things happen, they're more of an afternoon event and so forth. But, I, I, I just, I, I think folks are just interested in knowing what that procedure is, the explanation that comes from that, and, I mean, I don't, I don't envy whoever has to make that decision at that point in time, having to do it, because it's, it is a tough one.
It is. It is, and you know, the last two days with, you know, it's been hard sleep hearing, you know, there's going to rain. I've been up at four-thirty, been watching the weather, been checking the Weather Channel, and, you know, we, we monitor it. It's just, you know, storms have been rolling through here almost every morning here recently. And obviously, clearly, that one became pretty bad. Everybody, you know, I've heard, you know, was it asleep at the wheel? Or why weren't they watching it? It was forecast X number of days out, well, they don't always get it right either with respect to the, the weather folks. But, but I would accentuate to those people, say, well, you don't care about the kids, you put them out there in a storm. We have done, under my tenure, so much to make schools safe. And those are things that hurt, starting with the vestibules that we put at school, the flip charts that we made for teachers. We actually conducted a statewide in-service here on Safe Schools about five or six years ago. Committing schools to doing drills in conjunction with the sheriff department with active shooters and, and takeovers have gotten our people so acclimated to what to check for before you let somebody leave with a parent. You know, we've made so many parents mad because we make them show their identification even though we know they're their parents. So, we've done so many good things, and it's, in this particular case, it probably overshadows all of that. I don't know what, I can say personally, I've, I've learned from it, and I think, Ms. Snell, we both would agree, and.
I think, I think your track record on inclement weather and, and emergency situations has been excellent, and I just don't, I don't think that expectations of a perfect record, you know, it's, it's a goal to have, and I think we certainly have that goal, and I know you have that goal. You know, we missed this one, and, but it's not because of a lack of commitment or a lack of effort on anybody's part. Specifically, I, I know Mr. Snell and the, the drivers of the buses that were out there in that situation, they deserve a, a word of appreciation because they were out there in the middle of that situation kind of unexpectedly, and, you know, appreciate them getting through it and doing what was, what was called on. So, we didn't want them to be out there once they were out there, but, but they were.
But, you know, all the surrounding counties went too, I don't know if anybody noticed that. Davidson went, Williamson went, Cannon went, Wilson went, we went. And I just, and, and you know the irony, that the superintendent from Montgomery County called me that afternoon. They apparently had a similar situation the week before. They got to school, and fifteen minutes later, they had to turn the buses around, pick them up, and take them all home because of a change in weather, but apparently, they did get them there, and they didn't have to deal with some of the things that, that we did. I actually inquired if he'd been called any names that day, and he said many. So, I guess that comes with the job, right?
It does.
I'd say at the end of the day, though, you like to coin that phrase from time to time, that anytime all the students arrive safely to their designation and those, and buses are not damaged, it's a good day.
Yeah.
It's a good day.
One more. Kind, kind of along that line, but separately, someone, I had a, someone asked me the question about the policy during tornado drills, when students are in school, about having students on second floor. Are they, do they remain on second floor in interior halls, or are they moved down to third floor?
Yeah, we actually, I presume you're talking about Segal.
I, I.
Yeah, we actually went.
He got identified by what school, he just apparently has a student on the second floor and wanted to know what that policy is.
Yeah, we, Josh Cooley, we actually met at Mr. Hooker from Emergency Management out at Segal High School, and we did, first of all, it's difficult to bring them all down.
Sure.
Because they've got a lot of windows, secondly, it congests, it's congested enough as it is. But we've always heard the rule of thumb is you get them to the bottom floor. I mean, I think that's kind of a given. But after pretty thorough examination of Segal High School, found out that, you know, the wall's concrete, there's concrete ceiling, they're, they're as safe on the second floor as they were the first floor, which kind of remedied a problem that we had there. So, we got the caller too on that too, you know, we, we want to make sure they weren't brought down or something like that, and they weren't brought down because it's just as safe up there, per Mr. Hooker and per, per the study.
Yeah, the, the right answer is, has been given, that it's been checked out by people more professional than us in that regard, and, and have deemed that to be the right course of action. That's, that is, that's the answer we need to go with.
But, you know, we had a good meeting the other night with the, and I know everybody was going, but the parent advisory committee, and one of the things we talked about was tornadoes. For example, one of our dilemmas is when there's a warning for Rutherford County, the one is for Rutherford County, it's not for the Christiana area where the, where the real threat is. It's for Laverne, it's for Oakland, everywhere else. Well, you got kids down there, they're hunkered down in the old tornado position, and it's rough on their, their knees and their backs and all that. So, we're trying to give some latitude to principals so that, you know, they got some autonomy with respect to, you know, what to do. You know, when do they need to go down there? Monitor your weather radios, check the forecast, do all kinds of things. But, of course, the problem with that is you put judgment in the equation, and you're counting on everybody making the right decision, because if you don't, you know, we see what, we see what can happen to you with respect to how it plays out in the paper and everywhere else. But, I don't know, James has done good work on it, Paula has, Josh. We're trying to refine it as, and, and learn, if there are mistakes made, learn from those mistakes.
Other discussion. We'll see you Thursday night, we're adjourned.